Yes, just one quick minute, please.
No problem.
There should be a PowerPoint in the...
What's the PowerPoint call?
Audio people are telling me what's possibly called it.
Yeah, Chris, do you have a name for the PowerPoint file?
I will drop it, I'm gonna drop it into the folder right now. Kyle, is this the one? The copy one that we were working on?
Yes, the name of the PowerPoint is just PCSS and then the date.
And then copy?
Yes, then copy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, while we're doing that, I forgot to ask Gabriel to call the role. It's not on our agenda. So Gabriel, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brown, Chair Commissioner Katinsky. Not present, Commissioner Crandall, Chair. Chair Pro Tim Wu.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell.
Here.
And Chair Berlin.
Here.
Tara, do you see the PowerPoint now? It says PCSS.
Yes, I have it here.
Thank you. So, this is a study session the Planning Commission had requested on the South El Camino Real focus area, the general plan. There was a particular interest in the mixed-use standards, but we understood that you wanted to talk about the area in general. So, that is how we crafted our report and presentation. Next slide. So this is a map of the focus area showing that the area includes three zones. The mixed-use 3.2 zone, the neighborhood commercial 2-zone and neighborhood commercial 3-zone. Next slide, please. These are standards in the general plan that are really the primary standards and guidance for the types of uses that are intended in that area. With the neighborhood commercial serving area, in 2015, there were some changes that were made to reflect the general plan. The changes increased the FAR of the district from .35 FAR and for the neighborhood commercial area, it went up to .5 FAR. For the neighborhood commercial 3-zone, it went up to .75. With the area, there were some policies actually in the general plan with the focus on coastal views from the freeway. There was an effort to build in an exception for a conditional use permit process. If a project were to extend above the height line of the freeway and there's a measurement and how you would consider that height line. That was added in 2015. But a lot of the work in 2015 was focused on the mixed-use 3.2 zone because it was an entirely new zone out of the general plan. The city council in 2015 asked us to revisit the standards that were adopted with the general plan update with direction to limit the height of density to two stories on El Camino Real, requiring that commercial uses be, continue to be on the first level of El Camino Real. There would be up to three stories along the alleys to the rear so the topography of the area drops down towards alleys in the back that abut residential neighborhoods. And the intent was to keep that, the three stories. Again, making sure that that there would be a preservation of coastal views from the freeway. So there are quite a lot of design constraints to work around when we discuss these standards. In this table, you'll see, I wanna make a point of clarification because it's come up with some current projects that we've been discussing with the Planning Commission more recently. Is regarding this, these standards, about 10 units per gross acre or 24 units per net acre. Most projects are going to be using the net acre standard because they don't have roads in the sites. So, the difference between the net acre standard and gross acre is when a site includes right-of-way for roads, circulation. If it does not, then you would apply the net acre standard. Next slide, please. So when we went through these, this exercise of setting standards, there was an extensive amount of analysis done. Really, for the first time, city staff had used GIS extensively to understand the topographical constraints of the area. We did a profile of the topography from El Camino Real down to the ocean. And we did a number of measurements of the lots to understand the lot width, the lot depth, the size of the lots, the grade difference of those lots in the mixed-use 3.2 zones. Those lots are the purple outlined properties. And the red outlined properties with the lines crossed through it are the profiles that were taken of the elevation. And that red lot is what we found to be the baseline. We used that to understand what could feasibly be constructed in this zone as close as possible to what that general plan vision was for the density and the types of uses. Next slide, please. There's also an analysis of views from the freeway. We took photos along, to be safe, we took video and tried to understand where the view blockages were and made an effort to apply standards that would address that policy for views along the I-5 freeway. Next slide, please. And the result were these height standards shown on this graphic. The red line is a height ceiling limit. So the height, overall height limit is 33 feet from El Camino Real, a height ceiling that goes all the way across the property. There's a plate line height ceiling at 28 feet that goes across the property. Like we normally do, we have a height averaging analysis. That is the purple line in the middle. And then in the rear, to ensure that there is stepping back of mass from the alley, there's a 13-foot setback when the height of buildings exceeds 28 feet from, measured at the center, the center point of the lots at the rear property line. And in the upper right-hand corner of the slide to to account for some properties don't have as much topographical change than others, there was a provision built-in for a conditional use permit process where if someone wanted to exceed 33 feet, the overall plate line height ceiling, they could apply for a conditional use. Part of that would be a special finding that has to be met. The overall finding, the intent, is that the increase in height, you can see there the area A in the top right. If that were to go above the 33-foot height limit, that the area B would increase the amount of view preservation from the freeway. So overall, you have a net benefit. The intent was not to make projects do a view analysis if they were not applying for this exception so that it would not be a hindrance to projects. Next slide, please. And then I'm gonna turn this over to Kyle Weber that teamed up with me on this study session.
Yeah, so I think the, so the goal of the study session is to have, which I know we will, a more elaborate conversation on the development standards, some of which Chris went over. I'm just gonna go over a couple of recent projects that are under review right now. And we could use these as examples in that discussion if need be. So, these two projects are both located in the neighborhood commercial 2 zoning district. This first project, Shoreline Dental, it proposes this two-story, 6,000-square-foot commercial and office building. It's located in the northwest corner of South El Camino Real in West Avenida Valencia. This lot is located in architectural overlay. And so, of course, it does incorporate traditional Spanish colonial revival architecture. So far, DRC, the Design Review Subcommittee, has reviewed the project twice during the processing period. The project proposes a max height of 33 feet, which is the max height allowed by the zone, which Chris kinda touched on a little bit. And that higher than 33 feet would require CEP. This project also incorporates 30 parking stalls, 28 of which are required with the parking standards outlined in the code. Next slide, please. So this is just an elevation of Shoreline Dental. You can see that this is kind of typical. The elevation doesn't change much, incorporating any kind of differences in the alleyway. But, next slide, please. The other project is the Valencia Building. This is also a new two-story commercial building proposing a restaurant with outdoor dining, which is on the ground floor, and then office space on the second floor. Surface and subterranean parking is incorporated into the design of the project, which is meant to provide a total of 20 parking stalls. But a shared parking agreement has been requested by the applicant to meet the total number of, at least 26 parking stalls, which are required. The Valencia Building project also, of course, incorporates Spanish colonial architecture as a requirement and is proposing a similar height to the Shoreline Dental project with a max top of roof measurement of 33 feet. So again, next slide, please. So these two projects are currently under review with staff and are our most recent examples of development proposed in the downtown South El Camino Real area or the focus area for today's study session. Other development projects either completed or proposed in the focus area within the last five years. Do you include one with a known developer, Nick Buchanan, which he has agreed to present here tonight for the Planning Commission? And Nick does have a PowerPoint to share with the Planning Commission. So we'd like to continue straight on to that. But before we continue, does the Planning Commission have any questions for staff before we go on?
These current projects are meeting the gateway criteria as far as architectural standards and so forth?
If I heard that correctly, are they meeting the architectural standards for the design guidelines? Is that right?
Well, this is a gateway, so I'm assuming they have the gateway requirements also. Are they meeting those?
Yeah, so when they went to DRC, the project planner, Katie Crockett, outlined in the DRC staff report how it complies with the design guidelines, including for the gateway as well. And we can forward the staff report to you or I can pull it up if we wanna talk about anything in particular with those requirements or the guidelines.
I'll go look it up.
Yeah, Kyle, I have a question for you. Jim, if I may?
Please.
So Kyle, will Chris be presenting? Will he be closing the presentation after you?
Christopher, it sounds like we're gonna have Nick present and then we're gonna open it up for discussion after Nick presents.
Yeah, so we, for one note, I do wanna mention these two projects are in the neighborhood commercial zones. I don't know if that was mentioned, but Nick Buchanan, yes, we would like him to take over and give his presentation so that you overall have information to lead us into the Planning Commission discussion. And then the three of us will be able to answer questions.
Okay. Well, the reason why I ask is because we're, you know, not reviewing any specific project here. Mr. Buchanan is here just to share some reference points with us based on his last project, is what it sounds like. So I will save my questions to the end of the staff presentation, which I'm assuming at this point that Mr. Buchanan's presentation will be part of staff's presentation. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chris, this is the, Commissioner Wu, quick question, Valencia project at the dilapidated gas station. When do, when does the Design Review Subcommittee and Planning Commission expect to see it?
Commissioner Wu, that's gonna be next week.
Thank you, Gabriel.
All right, thank you.
So I would probably recommend that there not be discussion in particular about the design aspects of this project since it's gonna be, go through that process still. So this is presented for reference of what's proposed on the South El Camino Real focus area.
Same with the dental offices, still under Design Review, is that correct?
I believe on the 27th of January, it went to staff review. And then, there's not a, there's not a third meeting scheduled for that right now, I don't believe.
Commissioner Brown, my understanding is that the DRC made some recommendations and, you know, and if the applicant incorporated those, next step would be Plan Commission.
Okay, well, then let's move forward. Chris was the next step, Nick's presentation. Is that what you wanted to do next?
Yes, Tara is gonna pull it up, the PowerPoint for you.
Okay, great. Well, as soon as that's up, Nick, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Haven't seen you in a long time. Trust you're all keeping well. Most of you know me well. We've spent a lot of time together in the past. I haven't spent as much time on the presentation as I might have liked, but what I thought I'd do is give you a quick overview. Chris reached out to me sometime towards the end of last year. And so I don't have a very specific agenda, although there's a few items I'd like to emphasize. I don't believe any of you, all of you, well, quite a few of you are involved in the review of this project. Obviously, it's no longer in front of you as a hearing, so you're welcome to, you know, ask questions and comment on it as much as you like, at least. I don't wanna, you know, to the extent that you want, I wanted to make myself available. But I'll quickly do an overview of the project using an old slide presentation with some pictures of the current project and then just talk on some of the challenges, you know, that we've had. So, you know, the Tenterne South El Camino Real project, as we're calling it now, is a marketing name most of you are familiar with. It's an old gas station site, thrifty old gas station site built in 19, or abandoned in 1986. It's 1,293,000 square, yeah, 12,930 square feet. So it's not a full city block. Next slide, please. Yeah, it must, you know, it's an old gas station site. I think one of the, the backstory to this project is, you know, watch the general plan, go through the Centennial General Plan, go through the update process. I live in San Clemente, live very close to the site. I live, I used to drive by this every day. And this is what greeted us, you know, it's an old lighted gas station. I think all of us, you know, through the general plan and, you know, most of the folks at the city would like to see, this is great real estate down in this particular part of town. And by changing the zoning from neighborhood commercial to mixed use, you know, I think the intent was to incentivize development. And so, you know, this is what was here before. Next slide, please. You know, some of this I've touched on a little bit. You know, again, through the general plan, you know, I bought this in 2013, hired Michael Luna, local architect. You know, the mixed-use zone at the time in the Centennial Plan allowed three stories. And, you know, the language, you know, I'm not gonna get into the politics of it, but initially when I bought it, you know, it allowed, you know, the way I read the language, it allowed 45-foot-high development in the area. And, you know, seven units, which is 24 units an acre. Next slide, please. What I found out, obviously, through the approval processes, you know, even once the general plan was approved, you know, we massaged a lot of things in the zoning after that, but this is the end result. So you saw the gas station a little earlier. What we've got on the El Camino Real side right now is a two-story building. There's retail on the ground floor, an office on the second floor on the, right in front of you. On the right-hand side, to the right of the opening, is a ground-floor retail space of 892, 894 square feet. And there's a residential component above that. There's a plaza on the front left-hand side. But the bulk of the residential units, or all of the residential units, with the exception of the one on the far right, are west-facing and face the ocean. So that's what we have there today. This is still a work in, well, it's almost a finished product. The work in progress is we're getting the retail built out on the ground floor and then the signage is not up yet, so I still need to come in. Once we finalize things with our ground-floor retailer, it will come in and do the signage program. So there's temporary signage up there right now. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the alley. One of the things that I really, you know, wanted to do is wanted to make sure that we improved and enhanced the alley. We put a lot of landscaping into the project, but, you know, the alley at the back there, you know, shown with some landscaping on it. And I think this slide was important, at least to show, you know, from the street view, you know, big chunks of the building aren't that visible from the alley and from the street view because of the sort of the wedding cake terracing that we did. So, you know, this is something that was, is very heavily sort of, what's prescribed, I guess, is probably the right word in the design guidelines. And you can see the result over here. And I think, I think one of the things I also wanted to mention as we go through this is, you know, a lot of things, I'm gonna touch a little bit on views and height and that sort of thing. You know, as a, and I'm gonna touch a little bit about what a developer goes through. And I, you know, I sort of would encourage you to quiz me a little bit on this as we go through this. But, you know, I live in this town. I love this town. I don't really, one of the things I like about San Clemente is its character and the fact that it's an authentic little beach town. And when a developer comes, you know, and looks at a piece of property, I think one of the things we look at is we look at the rules and we underwrite a property based on, you know, what's in front of us and what the city guidelines are. You know, and a lot of people have commented that this building, you know, during the approval process was too big and too tall and that sort of thing. And my intent was, you know, to build a project that met the guidelines. You know, I would have built it, if I was allowed to build taller, I would have built taller. This is, this building meets the 33-foot height limit. We tried to get it approved at 45, then it got cut down to 35 feet. You know, and then, you know, we went back down to 33 feet, which is, you know, what it's been, you know, all that time. And if I, if I look back, you know, now, politics doesn't matter. We've got a project that's there. You know, I, I think the scale, personally, I think it's nice that it's not too big. You know, I, you know, if it was a 60-foot-tall building in this location, as a resident of town, I think it would have been way too tall. You know, I'm gonna touch a little bit on, I'd like to add a couple more feet and I'll tell you why. But, you know, I personally think that the scale is consistent with what you might see in a Spanish village, you know, in the Mediterranean, the Mediterranean cities. So, you know, that's my two cents worth. Next slide, please. You know, he has, I think this picture is important as well because you can see how it's set back. But one of the things we were able to create is, you know, we've got really impressive outdoor space on this building. You know, the views from these upper decks are spectacular. We've got 180-degree ocean views. So, you know, I think it's important to see that. The sliding doors or the doors that we've got on the back let an enormous amount of light and air in. And I'd encourage any of you to come by and see the project, but I think one of the Planning Commissioners has already, but, you know, they live really well. And I think this is the intent of what we tried to do on the general plan. So, you know, I think that side of it worked well. Next slide, please. I think Chris has already touched on some of this language. This was just the language specifically relating to the general plan. So next slide, please. Again, next slide, please. So, you know, one of the reasons I wanted a little bit more height is, you know, is basically in the residential component of the project, you know, I wanted to try and get 10-foot ceilings, you know, at least, or 9'6" at a minimum. This project is really tricky because, and you're gonna have this on all of the projects in this particular zone, is, you know, one of the determinants that determines what you can build on a project is a function of parking and height. And, you know, we were required to build 33 parking spaces on the project, and I'll touch on that a little bit. But to get, to get 33 parking spaces onto a 13,000-square-foot site is a challenge. And so the only way we were able to do that is to have separated and have two separate parking garages and have one coming in off the side of El Camino Real and ramping up. And we maxed out all the grades to get the upper parking garage. So if you look on the left-hand side, that, you know, the upper level, we accessed that off the side street. And then the lower parking garage, we access off the alley and then come down and then sort of angle back down towards Santiago. So I should have put a section in there, but, you know, that's, that's, that parking is ultimately what is, is, as a builder that builds in other cities, oftentimes is what determines, you know, how many units we can get in is a major factor, you know, in how the development ends up playing out. But, you know, ultimately, what I, my goal was with this, we were asking for a little bit more height was to try and get 9'6" ceilings in here. And so if you look up in the top, top left-hand corner, that's a bedroom at the top. And you'll notice that we vaulted the ceilings in certain locations just to try and, you know, make the ceiling heights look higher and more comfortable. So what you end up having with a mixed-use project is, you know, the highest and best uses, you know, if I was building this project anywhere, we look at a project and we say, what's gonna drive the value, right? So with condos or residential is our highest and best use in a town like San Clemente, whether for sale or rental housing. You know, it's worth more than, than, than commercial, whether it's ground-floor retail or office. And so, you know, that, you know, the higher quality you build where you can capitalize on views, that's ultimately what pays for, you know, everything below that unit, all the underground parking. You know, the parking on this project, it cost us an absolute fortune. It cost us a little over $100,000 for parking still. You know, so I think if you put that math up there, and, you know, and I know the Planning Commission's interested in, you know, is more focused on the design of it, but, you know, if you're looking to encourage development, you know, at the end of the day, it's about economics. So, you know, what I, what we're trying to do, what I tried to do to capture those views and to maximize our sale-level revenue, it ended up costing us an enormous amount of money because to vault all those ceilings, we had to get custom scissors, trusses built, you know, so that we could get the ceilings from 9' up to, you know, 10, 11 feet in certain locations. You know, and so those were just some of the challenges we had to live with. On the right-hand side, we were at two stories, and because of the 33 feet on the two stories, the ceiling heights worked out great there, you know, and we were able to attract a really, a really interesting restaurant for that space. And again, I think you need to have, you know, 13, 14, 15-foot clear for a good restaurant on the ground floor. We have about 13 and a half feet. So, you know, we have decent ceiling heights on the office. But, you know, I think that's important to touch on at least a little bit. Next slide, please, Chris, or whoever's on the PowerPoint. You know, parking again, and if I'm running over time, please let me know if you wanna interject or ask me questions. You know, please do so. Chris, I know you gave me 10, 10 minutes, but I'm not watching the clock. The, I'll come, the parking again is the key to this project. And, you know, we've got a 26-foot drive-al requirement in the, in the city of, it was a 24 or 26? I think it's 26. But the drive-al plus the depth of the parking is essentially what sets your base for your design. So we came in off the Santiago side and we drove in as far, we ramped up as far as we could get to get as much parking as we could. But there was a, if you go to the next slide, the, we needed to have enough clearance to get a car that met the ADA parking requirements in from the alley. So we had to stop the upper parking garage where the parking ramp is because, because of the layout and the parking. So those parking spaces where it says "commercial," we were required to do a 3-foot setback from the fire department on the left-hand side. So you've got that 3-foot walkway. You've got 18-foot for a parking space, and then you've got the 24 or 26-foot for a drive-off. And that's what set that beam. And that's what set that beam. And so that set the height, the, the, how far we could come from the, from the upper level. And then we couldn't go any further to the right because we hit Santiago. So we were essentially capped at the amount of parking spaces we had on this project. So, um, that, you know, one, you know, one of the challenges we had is, you know, there's a minimum FAR of commercial of point three-five. I was, I, I argued to try and get a little less because the parking drives, drives the, uh, the, 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 the F, the commercial FAR drives the amount of parking spaces we were required to do for that. And, um, we ended up having to build thirty-three parking spaces. So we were lucky. Um, if you go back to the previous slide, you know, that part of the, the depth of that parking garage determines the depth of the retail on the front. And, um, if, if you use that minimum FAR of point three-five and the public, the public open space requirements for the entry courtyard and the patio, any additional commercial we had to have for the retail had to go up onto the second floor, onto the office. And the office essentially just, you know, doesn't, doesn't, you know, isn't an economic driver in this particular location. So, um, that's kind of a little bit of the overview on some of the challenges we had, um, you know, on the parking. Um, we've obviously got a courtyard and entry court, a patio. Um, you know, so the building is fairly well-built out on the site plan that we had. Um, I want to jump through to just some of the pretty pictures of showing some of the inside units. So if you can go to the next slide, please. Next one again, that's a picture of the alley. Uh, go back one, sorry.
Nick, I'm going to give you just a few more minutes because I want to make sure the commissioners have time for questions and comments and things.
Then jump, then just show, let me show you the pretty pictures. There you go, next slide, please. Um, that's the view on the top right-hand side and the left is a kitchen. Next slide, please. Um, you know, those are again on the inside on the lower right-hand side. It shows what we did to vault the ceilings to just give us a little bit more space. Um, I think those are the main sort of key ones. Um, and then, you know, Chris touched a little bit on, you know, what, trying to encourage, what we would do to try and encourage development. And I think a lot of that's much, you know, related to economics. You know, this particular location, it's very expensive to, to, to build in. You know, my project approval process was somewhat extreme. I think most of you can attest to that. I think going forward, my new applicants probably aren't going to face quite a long, you know, the timeline. But, you know, for people interested in coming in and, you know, to work in, in, in a particular location, we want certainty of approval process. We want it to be relatively efficient time-wise because the longer it takes for a project to get built, you know, approved and built, you know, it just exposes us to a number of things. I mean, I'd never, you know, this project's eight years in the, I'm in my eighth year on a seven-unit project right now, which is, you know, just, you know, I, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And, um, you know, the, the amount of time that you have where you're exposed to commodity price increases, you know, things like coronavirus and what have you. You know, that's, that, that, that's probably the single biggest deterrent. Um, you know, parking is another issue. You know, I, we initially, when we came in on this project, we thought we were going to be able to use the mixed-use parking requirement in the mixed-use zone. You know, that changed on us. Um, you know, so we had to find three more spaces. We were very fortunate to be able to do that. Um, you know, we touched on height. Um, I have some more stuff in my presentation about that, but I, I, essentially that was set, set up as a, you know, something to protect views from the freeway, which, which, you know, I kind of questioned the sanity of that. And in my mind, we should build what's appropriate for us in this particular location. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that the South Palm traffic, you know, you know, should, 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 should come into consideration on that one, but that's just my personal view. Um, and then, you know, this particular, our design guidelines are, you know, are beautiful. And the project, at the end of the day, if, if built to those, you know, looks great, but it makes it extraordinarily expensive. You know, the twelve-foot, twelve-inch setbacks we have on, um, you know, Al Camino Real and Santiago essentially make, mean that you have double-frame all those walls. You know, the, um, the tile that we have is beautiful, but, um, you know, I've used the Redlands K-Tile roofs. You know, a lot of those things are just incredibly expensive. And I've had enormous amount of resistance from, you know, the fact that I'm here today. We got a, I started sales a year ago and I've sold and closed one of the seven homes. You know, basically tells you that the market isn't here for housing at this price. So, you know, we're essentially overbuilding the product. You know, but yes, are they stunning and they've got beautiful views? Absolutely. But, you know, if, if they'd been a couple of hundred thousand dollars cheaper, you know, they would have been sold and done by now. And, you know, that's a function of what we've put into it, just cost-wise, you know. So anyway, um, I think I've said most, Chris, I don't know if there's anything you wanted me to touch on. I just wanted to run through that high level and really be available for questions.
I think that's great, Nick. So we welcome questions from the planning commission now.
Thank you all for your time, by the way, and, yeah, thank you.
No, thanks for taking the time, Nick, to come in and, and talk to about, talk to us about this. Uh, I'll, I'll throw in here for a second, I'm not, not really questions, but a couple of observations, I think, because this was, this project still sticks in my mind. I think, I think one reason was is it was a lot of math involved, probably more than we do on a lot of projects and, and looking at heights and how much is this and how much is that? And adding and subtracting and parking issues. Kind of one, one observation about the parking issues in an area like that, we, we may want to think about, and this has been kind of bouncing around for a while in my mind since this project, is, um, looking at some changes in our parking standards, depending on where it is or on mixed use. Um, we usually require for places this big, two spots. Do we want to make that limit one, uh, minimum of one instead of a minimum of two? I know in LA downtown, one of the ways that they really got their, um, old buildings renovated and just really kind of had this wonderful explosion of, of, um, renovation there is that they changed some of their parking requirements and said, in these buildings, you only need to park one car in a condo instead of two cars. Um, now that's downtown LA where you can't park on the street just because it's, it's just far too restrictive. In San Clemente, you could, but you'll be impacting other people. So we would have to kind of take that into account. But it might be something we want to consider as, five years ago or so, and we, when we looked at this, you know, for instance, you know, Uber and some of these other types of services weren't as available or weren't, you know, weren't as prevalent and, you know, we didn't have much confidence that they were going to be around. So i- it's just something possibly to consider as we, in the future, as we look at parking standards, would that, would that be appropriate? And I'm not advocating one or another. I, I think it's a, it's a, a good question to ask and to figure it out. Um, the other observation I had with this was, um, you know, I think I'm the only one on the planning commission now who was both in G-PAC and the planning commission as we did the general plan. And one thing that came up that surprised me during this that, you know, I mean, this is all kind of water under the bridge. I don't want to debate it again, but is, might be apropos for future projects is, um, the, the view preservation from the freeway that was being discussed. And that turned, that was, that meant one thing in G-PAC and when we were approving the general plan and planning commission. And then it meant something else when we were starting to actually apply it to businesses. And it was, it was meant to stop buildings from doing like what the Ralphs does down there where it's like a wall on the freeway. And for a period of time, you just can't see anything and just looking at a wall. And we didn't want buildings that did that from the freeway. And that, that was interpreted as meeting, I, I think in this project, you know, kind of the first project that we were dealing with, where we were struggling with, what does that mean in, in, in reality, in practically? It was sort of, started to be interpreted as any, any encroachment of the roof into the ocean, say, from the freeway was a problem. And, um, if I recall, it was, in this case, it was like from one lane for a few seconds, you could, you know, there was that kind of encroachment. So I, I think it's something that we should be looking at for, you know, what does that really mean? What was the intent? What do we want it to mean? Um, uh, I, that was something that was a little bit frustrating for me because it, it kind of came out of the blue and I felt like, I felt like, um, it, uh, it was being interpreted in a way that hadn't been intended by, by G-PAC or by the planning commission when we really went through this stuff. So, and it, I think it was, it was clear that it kind of made something down there more difficult to put up when what we want in that area for the general plan is to revitalize that area and have a lot of new, uh, mixed-use and neighborhood commercial. So, um, just things that I've been remembering as we've been going through some of this process, looking at some of these old things. So, um, anyone else have any questions or, or any, any observations they have? Uh, Bart, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, um, good to see you again, Nick. Um, when we went through this process, I, I've got to say that, uh, I commend, uh, Nick, and he's probably one of the only developers I know who would have stuck, stuck with this project and, uh, persevered through the, uh, I guess eight years he says he went through. And he said a number of times that he was lucky on being able to solve some of these problems, but he had a creative team that, took the restrictions that were put on him and, uh, got it to work. But, uh, like, um, Jim said, uh, going through this whole process, uh, this project was there before the ordinances were in effect. He, he was kind of creating them for us and forced us into doing our job, which is, uh, kudos to him for that. But this is a, um, ordinance that has, uh, a lot of compromises in it because there was so much input from the public, so much, uh, input from G-PAC, the general plan, the planning condition, and city council. Each time it was reviewed, uh, views, like Jim said, um, the importance of them from the freeway seemed to vary and change and whatnot. But, um, my feeling of what's been presented to us as far as, uh, Chris's effort is, uh, a document that takes into consideration all the input from all the parties and, um, compromises had to be made to satisfy everyone. And I think it was a, a great effort. Um, Nick, I would be curious, um, you bought your land on a cost basis based on, um, the density you thought you could get. Uh, when this is all done now, if you came in fresh, um, how much reduction in land costs would be necessary to comply with these standards versus what you had to go in, um, originally?
That's a really hard question to answer. I don't think that, um, I, I guess when you do a mixed-use project, you look at it differently than you would a single-family development. Um, you know, just because you've got to look at it over the life cycle of the project, you know, and a lot of other variables have probably had a bigger impact. Um, you know, material costs being one of them have just been skyrocketed. It's astronomical increases we've had. Uh, I, I think the density is appropriate. Um, you know, unless we reduce the parking requirement, you wouldn't be able to, I don't think you'd be, easily be able to get more density onto it. I think the low-hanging fruit in my mind, you know, I like the way the project turned out, honestly. If I'd had another eighteen inches or twenty-four inches more in height, and if the parking, if they, if the parking requirements were a little lower, you know, I, you know, that, that, that in my mind were the biggest sort of low-hanging fruit on this, on this.
And another question I have, it sounds like you were able to get a restaurant to, um, uh, commit to your commercial space. The square footage that you needed to have for commercial, et cetera, do you feel that that's appropriate, uh, for the standards? To get a, um, to have the whole?
I think, I think, I think there's, you know, the minimum FAR in this location is point three-five, and I think that's too much. And the reason, the ground-floor retail that we have, we have a nineteen-hundred-square-foot space and an eight-hundred-and-ninety-four-square-foot space, those work really well. Um, all the additional FAR that we needed to do to meet that minimum commercial went up into the office on the second floor. My personal recommendation would be to drop that down to like point two-five. You know, as a mixed-use project, you want to shield the residential from the noise on Al Camino Real with commercial, which makes sense. But your challenge is that parking diagram that I was showing on a little earlier. And so if you could, you know, if you could essentially do less of the second floor, you could reduce the size of the building and it'd give you a lot more flexibility.
Very good. That's good input. And then one last question, um, in the documents that, um, Christopher, uh, Chris gave us to review as far as, uh, um, reviews of mixed-use projects. One was kind of interesting that they, um, the value for your residential was viewed, no doubt about it. Um, they indicated that first guy in or even until commercial really takes a good foothold in an area, that they were considering putting residential in that, um, commercial area until it was more viable as a commercial area and convert it. Um, do you see this as even being, um, something to consider or is that just pie in the sky?
Uh, if that's a question for me, I, I wouldn't go down that road for the simple reason that if you, if you're looking to do for sale, you've got to submit a condo plan, you've got to do CCNRs, do a tentative tract map, that all sort of establishes the baseline and that's in perpetuity. Um, so I don't think you want to set up a certain set of restrictions and then change them midway. You know, you don't want an applicant to come back and do that. One of the things I sort of mentioned right at the very beginning is certainty of process. You know, and to have a, 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 a very complicated process like that, you know, is going to turn a lot of people away. Um, I, I think the commercial here is viable, but, you know, there's a, you know, a limited amount. You know, I, I think if you just did a little bit less, the values in the residential, the residential cross-subsidizes the rest of the project, um, for what it's worth. But, yeah, I, I would set the rules and stay away from live work, stay away from any of that. Just do a little bit less commercials so that you've got the buffer and so that we still get the sales tax revenue and to, you know, to, for this area to be successful. But, you know, leave it at that.
Okay, Jim, I'll, I'll cut myself off here and I think that's great input that, uh, possibly reducing the, uh, commercial, you have a great project and, uh, thank you for working with the city to get that thing built. It's great.
Um, Don?
Yeah, I, Nick, I'd like to ask you, you mentioned how the real, the residential really drives it. How critical would it have been to have that extra two feet? You went to city council and they denied you the, the extra two feet to go up from thirty-three to thirty-five. Was that, that two feet really would have made, uh, the residential play a little bit better and make it more viable to sell it, in your view?
Um, yeah, it's just a very subjective question. Um, I, I would like to have had it. I think, you know, even if it wasn't two feet, if it was another twelve inches, you know, I, on the, I would have been able to get sort of nine-foot-six clear on my ceilings. I think it would have made it a little bit, um, aesthetically, a little bit nicer. Um, I, I probably spent a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars on truss, you know, just in the construction and getting all the trusses done to try and create that look that I would have been able to get if I'd had an extra twelve inches. Um, you know, so, yeah, I would have liked to have had it, but, um, if I didn't have them, do we, would we have made it work? Yeah, probably.
I just want to say the extra two feet would have allowed you to stuff the ceiling, uh, get the height you need, sell the apartment, make it pencil out more to make it more economically viable. Was that, was that two feet have really made it more economically, uh, pencil out better for you, for your cost of course, but?
It would have helped, yeah, for sure. And would have ended up in, with a nice, slightly nicer product.
Okay, uh, Zen?
Yeah, I, I, Nick, uh, thank you very much for the stuff, uh, for making this presentation. I think this type of a post-construction, post-occupation evaluation is invaluable. So we can look at it, a lot of things, look at it as a hindsight. Um, a couple of questions, um, during your application, uh, I, I forgot if we did that or not. Were there a shared parking analysis? Now, we, we kept talking about a parking and I agree with you, the parking is the driver. Parking decides how much you can build. Um, but, um, a shared parking analysis is a routine today for mixed-use projects, especially when you have retail and a residential. And that will help you to lower the total amount of parking to be provided. Did we try that route?
So, Mr. Commissioner, most of the polit, most of this project approval ended up taking place at city council. And so once I moved on from planning commission to city council, the project was appealed to city council. I had to go through city council because of the zone change. The, um, the project was approved at planning commission with the, the city's mixed-use ordinance parking requirement. And then it went on to the city council and then they rejected that and asked me to put three more parking spaces in. So we had to redesign that. And then, you know, they specifically put a condition in the approval of the project that precluded us from being able to use shared-use parking. So it became political, but you're right. I mean, I've done twenty-something mixed-use projects up and down the coast of California and it makes complete sense. There's zero, you know, reason we should be building as many parking spaces as we are. You know, but, um, you know, at the end of the day, if you could build, is, we, we ended up building three parking spaces for a couple of the units, three bedrooms. There's no reason to do that. Um, cities like San Francisco- Cities like San Francisco have parking maximums. And, and it's just, it's a cost and a burden that adds, that increases the cost of housing.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. And also for the building height, I, I hear you that you, you would prefer to see another eighteen inch or twenty-four inch of the building height. During the planning commission discussion, we asked you to lower the building by two feet, which eventually the city council supported. What is your plate height of your residential units? You have two levels, the, the main level and the top level. What are the plates height now?
Have to measure them to get the exact, I think they're just over nine foot, nine foot two, thereabouts. So I was looking to try and get closer to ten feet. So I'm, you know, probably eight inches or ten inches short from where I'd like to be. I think I'm at about nine, nine foot, nine foot two.
So both, both floors are nine, nine, nine foot ceiling now?
I think so, nine foot. I, I, I would, I, I should know, I could go and measure it quickly, but I, I think it's about right on, just over nine foot, around nine foot.
Okay, and, and on top level, you changed the trust design to make it a volume ceiling to get a little more space.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, when you acquired this land, were there any cleaning up costs?
Yes, a lot.
I'm talking about the land was used as a gas station and the the brown for you to clean up cost, that, that's not a part of your cost, was it? When you acquired it, it's already cleaned up, is it?
That's a, that's a topic for another day, but the delays and the, you know, the cleanup and all that sort of thing, you know, was astronomical. So, you know, that was, that was effective for sure.
Okay. We've only got a few minutes left, so let me make sure. Mike, do you, have you got some questions or comments?
I do. I'll, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, Jim. Thank you. No, I, I think it's great. This is a great study case for us. Mr. Buchanan, thank you. Your project looks great. I feel like it was a bit of a privilege to be a part of that review and to see what happens when we stick to our objectives and how, you know, how it really affects the developer and, you know, how that pencils. Unfortunately, as you said, COVID may have, you know, factored in and, you know, things were just different for everybody, not just you. Everybody felt it, and I'm sorry to hear that because it is a beautiful project and I've seen your other work as well, and you're quite talented and you do a good job. And, and thank you, Chris, for bringing this in. I think as Commissioner Wu had said, this is invaluable information for us and when it comes to exceptions, you know, the objective of this study session was to review the development standards for the South El Camino Real general man focus area, which would include this property Mr. Buchanan has developed. And I'm very interested in, in how this is going to work going forward when an applicant comes in and wants to develop. We have exceptions built in. Let's just focus on height with the interest at time. And I would not be opposed to bring this back again because I think this could be a much longer conversation. It's definitely an important one for the city. But I'll just focus on the height right now, Chris, and we, you know, we have a, we have a thirty-three and a twenty-eight foot top roof and plate standard with exceptions built in through the CUP process for two extra feet. But there's no discussion on variances and privileges granted to others when we have, you know, averages in the area at forty-five and thirty-seven feet respectively, right? So obviously, there's been precedent set. If Mr. Buchanan was to come back again and do the same exact thing on another piece of property with the same zoning, what do you think the, the likelihood of making findings for variance for the extra two feet that he so desires? If you wanted to do it again, based on what the averages are for the zone?
Can do it.
I don't think we can meet the findings for that because there'd have to be a physical hardship that prevents someone from having a property right that others can have according to the zoning standards. So it's driven by the zoning standards. And not by what is developed on the properties, but it's based on the properties themselves. I think that it, it's good to remind the commission that there are, there is a lot of discussion on these zoning standards, and when we talk about views from the freeway, it's driven by policy LU thirteen point oh five. It just says new development shall be designed to minimize distractions of ocean views from the I five freeway. So if, if the intent of that was taken in a different direction when these standards are formed, then it looks like it, it's, it was probably largely affected by the wording of this policy not reflecting essentially what the understanding was according to what Commissioner Wu was saying.
The problem now is when the, when the council finally changed or approved the zoning ordinance, they retained the approval on this section for the extra two feet at the council level with the CUP. So they took the, the power out of the hands of the planning commission. And so the way I read it, it's it's thirty-five feet with a conditional use permit approved by council. Is the way the word, way the council wrote it into the zone zoning ordinance. So that's, that's what drives it down. You have to go to them to, to get approval.
So we're, we're starting to edge into our normal meeting times. So is there any urgent last comments or anyone?
Yeah, I can just close mine up. I just have one last part to my comment. This is important because we have a, a provision or a code that allows new uses to exceed the height limit in this in this zone that's so protected clearly, you know, we're talking about that now, even through variance and, you know, staff believes that findings couldn't even be made based on averages in the area. So my question is, you know, Chris, you and I have talked about this over the years in the past, and, you know, you bring in a new use, say, for example, wireless telecommunications. Say, one of the carriers was to approach the, Mr. Buchanan, for example, and you know, we allow, we allow the use in residential or mixed use zones, commercial zones, all zones, as far as I, as far as I know. If a new use was to be proposed on his building, that new use could actually exceed if it's disguised, just exceed the height limit if it's disguised as an appurtenance, like a chimney or a cupola or something, even though it's a new use. Is that correct?
At the city council had actually adopted standards, I think, after it might have even actually been at the same time that we processed these standards that really cut down on the type of exceptions that could be done, I think, above the height limit. Yeah, I, I'd have to look at it.
Okay, well, that's just something to think about. Maybe we talk about it another day, but I haven't seen any code changes that would prohibit a new use to come in and attach to a building as a LSE and exceed the height, you know, with any sort of architectural additions to the building, even though it is a new use. They could still do it, but maybe, again, that's another discussion, perhaps another day.
Chair, I have one more request to that.
Well, we are, we're, we're a few minutes into our regular meeting time, so I'd like to shut this down and is, is it something that you could ask the staff offline?
Yeah, I, no, well, I think this topic should have come back or continued. We, we should have continued to discuss this because we just put a few stories and there's not enough time for us to discuss the overall corridor. Maybe we can have another study session.
On the corridor itself, okay. And Jim, just one quick one. I'd love for you maybe to direct staff to look into the point two five for the commercial FAR in this area. And if we have this philosophy as far as views go, I hope it's consistent throughout and goes all the way up through our town. And when additional height is looked at for hotels potentially, that we consider what we've talked about today. Okay, I, I actually think those are a couple of good subjects for if we have another study session as Commissioner Wu suggested, we should probably slot those in to make sure we talk about those. It's good points. Okay, so then why don't we close this meeting and I don't know if anyone needs a break. We'll take two minutes, literally two minutes, if anyone needs a break, and then we'll start our regular meeting.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nick. Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Chris.
Hello, Jim?
Okay. Gabriel, you there? Oh, there's Gabriel. Yeah, I just wanted to commend Chris and Kyle on a thorough presentation. They went back in the history books to put this together, and I think they did a very balanced and good job on it.
Yeah, and we'll be happy to bring it back. I know there's, we didn't get to touch on everything, so we'll see what date we can schedule that for, bring it back.
We locked down memory lane, that's what.
It was. Okay, if everyone's ready, I will call for order the, the the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, February third, twenty twenty-one. Next item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Don, could you lead us in the pledge? And if everybody else wants to go.
Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
And indivisible with justice and for liberty for all.
Justice and divinity for.
Thank you. Next item is the roll call. Gabriel, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown, we didn't hear from you, but I see you there.
I sit here, I'm on the.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here by telephone.
Great. Commissioner Crandall, here. Chair Pro Tim Wu? Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
And Chair Ruline?
Here. Item four is our special orders of business, which we have none. Item five is minutes from the adjourned regular planning commission meeting of January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. I did have one revision on this that I wanted to suggest. On page eight, item four of the minutes, this describes a a, a condition that says that stringed instruments can be amplified outdoors, or at least that's the, that's the reading of that item. And my strong recollection is that we only allowed amplified sound by the wedding officiant. And we allowed string instruments, but only acoustical instruments that were not amplified outdoors. So I have a recommended change, but Gabriel, I don't know if did staff had a recommend, have a recommended change based on our conversation earlier?
You know what, just want to, I, I know you had brought this up to me before, Chairman, and so your, your, your thoughts on this are exactly how, how we heard the planning commission meeting is that the planning commission would allow string instruments outside that were not amplified, but that the wedding officiant could use amplified sound. So it doesn't read that way. It's a little confusing. So if, if you want to recommend some language, the only thing I could rec, other recommendation I would have is remove with the exception of, I'm sorry, remove of stringed instruments. So that just says with the exception of announcements of wedding officiants.
Yeah, and I did want to make sure that we include the stringed instruments because that was something we specifically, that was part of the motion. So, well, let me, let me read this off and see what people think. This is just a full replacement of that item four. Staff to revise the resolution and conditions to remove outdoor amplified sound from the CUP with the exception of announcements of wedding officiants and only unamplified acoustical stringed instruments are permitted outdoors. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that works for us.
Okay. Does anyone have any other changes?
Chair, chair, in addition to stringing, did the commission also allow for some keyboard like piano?
No, it was stringed instruments only.
Just a string, okay.
I'll move the, the approval of the minutes with changes. If you just about your own.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Kaczynski?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Here, hi.
And Ruline votes, I passes unanimously with the change. Item six, oral and written communication. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.sand-clemente.org slash PC public comment. Transmitted by three PM on planning commission meeting days is recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Gabriel, do we have any communications that are, for items that are not on the agenda?
We, Chairman, we have none.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is the consent calendar. We have nothing on our consent calendar this week. Item eight is public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And we have one item tonight, sixteen oh two North El Camino Real, CHP, El Camino Rick's mixed use, and Katie will be taking us through that. It's all yours, Katie.
Thank you, Chair Ruline. Good evening, members of the planning commission. I do have a presentation this evening. So hopefully IT will be able to bring that up for us. The proposed project is a renovation. The proposed project is a renovation in addition to a one-story commercial building, resulting in a first-floor commercial unit with a two-story residence above, which requires the site plan permit and the cultural heritage permit. The CHP is required because the proposed project is within 300 feet of two historic buildings, and the site is within the architectural overlay. Two variances are also requested to exceed lot coverage maximums and to allow tandem parking for the residents. Next slide. The site in question is located in the North El Camino Real mixed-use area, and again, within the architectural overlay, and within the visitor-serving commercial district of the coastal land use plan. The property itself, as you can see, is very narrow. It's 20 feet by 100 feet, which is just one-third of the required area and width for the MU2 zone where the property is located. There are several others in this zone, including the lot directly next door, 1604, that are the same size. The subject lot was split. 1604 and 1602 were originally one lot. They were split through a grant deed prior to the subdivision map act. Due to the small size and very narrow width, there are significant constraints on the development which can occur on this property. Next slide. Surrounding uses include mixed-use projects with ground floor retailer service uses with residential units behind or above, as well as standalone commercial, and the Casablanca Inn is across the street. Most of the buildings on this section of El Camino Real are one or two stories, but three stories are permitted, and there are several three-story buildings, such as the hotel across the street and the Venetian Villas, which was somewhat recently constructed just up the street. The development standards for the zone do permit three stories, and if the properties to either side of the property or anywhere else in the zone were to redevelop, they would all be permitted three-story construction per the development standards. The existing site pictured here on the left from the front is the single-story building just to the left, I'm sorry, just to the right of the landscaped wall. And on the other side of it, where you see the Pep Boys sign and the optometry sign. That optometry sign is the front of the other 20-foot lot. It does have a small office in the front, as well as the two stories behind, which are two small residential units. And then here on the right, you can see the rear of the building, which is just an asphalt slab as it currently exists. You can also see the garage of that other narrow lot next to the subject lot. As you can see, that lot is basically at 100% lot coverage. Next slide. In addition to being within the architectural overlay, as I previously mentioned, the subject property is within 300 feet of two historic structures, which you can see here. It's approximately 265 feet from the San Clemente Art Supply Building, which the planning commission just, I think, at the last meeting reviewed last month. And it's approximately 70 feet across the alley to a property at 1608 Caia Lasbolas, which is a multifamily residence. The photo there on the bottom is of that Lasbolas property. It shows the rear of it, which is the portion of the property from where the proposed project can be seen. Next slide. The proposed development would add on to the existing small commercial space two additional stories for one single residence. This reflects the goals and policies of the general plan and the coastal land use plan, and the intent of this zone, which is to provide mixed-use development with, with visitor-serving commercial on the ground floor. The project meets all but two development standards for which variances are requested. Specifically, the project is below the maximum allowed floor area ratio of 1.5, and at 32 feet 4 inches is well below the maximum height limit of 45 feet. The project also meets the urban open area requirements of mixed-use zones and satisfies the landscaping requirements in the code as well. It incorporates landscape at the rear of the property as well as on all three of the decks on the second and third floors. Next slide. As previously mentioned, at 20 feet by 100 feet, the subject lot is a third of the minimum width and size minimums prescribed for the MU2 zone. One of the variances requested is to exceed the lot coverage maximum to allow 70% coverage where 50% is permitted. Because of the substandard lot size, in order to build to the to the requested floor area ratio, which again is below the maximum for the zone, and not exceed lot coverage, the development would never meet the city's design standards requiring incorporation of outdoor spaces on each level or massing and building articulation requirements. Additionally, the variance to allow for tandem parking for the residents is requested. There's really no way for a 20-foot property zoned MU2 to incorporate a residence with side-by-side parking that meets engineering standards and provides the trash storage and access of the alley as prescribed in the design guidelines. The tandem parking allowance, a similar tandem parking allowance is provided for narrow lots, which are less than 50 feet wide elsewhere for duplexes. If the same idea were applied to this single residence, the 20-foot lot would more than qualify. Without the two requested variances, the properties, the property owner would be really deprived of the ability to develop, to develop the property as mixed-use while meeting design standards and the high-quality architecture expected within the A overlay. While other property owners with larger lots in the same zone would be able to develop a mixed-use project. Therefore, staff was able to make the findings required for variants, as you find in the draft resolution of approval. Next slide. As you can see, the building is Spanish colonial revival in style as required by the design guidelines for the A overlay. The building is, would be smooth, off-white, stucco, two-piece clay tile roofing. Other elements consistent with the SCR style include the deep set windows and doors with simulated divided lights, incorporation of outdoor areas, wrought iron railings and details, and the dark wood rafter tails. The project was reviewed by the Design Review Subcommittee. The recommendations made by DRSC are listed in Table 4 of the Agenda Report, along with how the project was modified in response. Due to the limitations of the project site, the applicant was unable to incorporate some of the recommendations. However, many of the recommendations were incorporated that increased the project's consistency with the design guidelines. You'll notice the modification to the second floor front deck where the sides were opened up to provide for more building articulation at the sides of the building as viewed from El Camino Real. And the columns were modified to be stucco as opposed to the wood beams as recommended. There's also the Wainscot at the front of the building to help with appearance and maintenance. And, and the amount of landscaping on the lot was increased by minimizing the width of the parking in the rear through the tandem parking request to incorporate additional landscape area. This modification also allowed for the transportation of trash, again, from the commercial trash area as well as the residential garage out to the alley on trash day, even if there are two cars parked at the site. Let's see. Next slide. Okay, in order to provide similar development rights for the property owner as other larger lots in the zone, staff supports the proposed variance and recommends approval of the project. It increases the property's conformance with the design guidelines and consistency with general plan policies from the existing development, and it will not negatively impact historic structures in the vicinity. In fact, it's more visually consistent with those developments and serves to improve the alley fronted significantly, which is near a historic property, with the addition of that landscape and the decorative paver. Staff did receive some questions from the two abutting property owners, but no public comments have been received to be read this evening. To staff's knowledge, the applicant has reached out to both adjacent property owners and is willing to work with them to ensure this project is a positive addition to the North El Camino Real area. That concludes staff presentation. The applicant team, including the property owner Brian Ross, as well as Mike McGinn and Ted Lambros are here. They may have comments they wish to share, and they would also be available to answer any questions. This is a really challenging site, and the applicant team has really worked diligently with staff to answer questions and to find solutions to the challenges posed to come up with a project that really meets the city's standards and goals for this area while main, while meeting the property owner's goals. So that's it for staff. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Katie, does anyone have any, actually, let me see if the applicant would like to speak before we go to questions. Let me ask the applicant, if you'd like to speak, you don't have to, but if you'd like to, you have 10 minutes. Is that Mr. Megan? Is Mr. Megan representing the applicant?
I don't know. Mike or Ted, do you have any comments or just available to answer questions?
I think they're on mute.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, you're muted if you, if you're trying to speak. Okay, well, I'm going to assume that you've got, you don't have any comments at this time, so we'll go into questions for staff or the applicant. Bart?
Just one question for you, Katie. What is?
Hi, I'm unmuted now.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Megan. Did you, did you have a comment you'd like to make before we ask questions?
Very briefly, most of it would reiterate what Katie said. It is a challenging site. It's 20-foot wide, 100-foot deep, and the contiguous property to the west has 100% lot coverage with mixed use. This is a project that we were approached by Mr. Ross, the owner, to develop for his own use. And we, the initial design and the work with staff was to facilitate something that was to his liking, as well as staff, and a benefit to the community. And I, I think that we've achieved that. Staff has been great to work with. And in my experience in this business of 44 years, we've had numerous presentations to, to the municipalities and always feel like it's better to work with a team. And then when you develop a team concept, you get a good result. So we always go for, we always desire a staff recommendation. And in this case, staff has recommended some changes to the site. They've been presented to the owner. They've been incorporated in the design. And I feel like we've really created a good balance of what the, the city desires and, and what the owner desires. So look forward to your comments, and I think it's a project that will greatly benefit the community and certainly the replacement of a, an old commercial storefront with a property like this, I, you know, I think is a great benefit. Anyway, thank you for your consideration. I'm available for any answers.
Thank you, Mr. Megan. So Bart, did you have questions?
Yes, for Katie. What is the restriction and, and/or the penalty, or does it need a that the, the commercial space is used as?
I'm really sorry, Bart. Can you repeat that? I was getting some feedback and I didn't understand.
Yeah, I heard something going on in the background. My question is, what is the requirement? One, what is the penalty? Two, and does it need a making sure the commercial space is used for commercial use? And rather than potentially residential creeping into it?
That's a good question. I mean, I think this approval makes clear that the first floor is for commercial use. Additionally, and I should have mentioned this in my presentation, this is in the coastal zone. And one of the requirements of these properties within the coastal zone is that the first floor be visitor-serving commercial. So coastal would also be looking at this. And, and then just at a staff, just day-to-day level, we do review all of the business licenses. And ultimately, if there were to be a residence in the first floor, it would become just a code compliance issue. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I don't know if there really is an answer for that question. I just wanted to point out the potential problem on this, but I'll save the rest of my comment for discussion.
Commissioners and Chairman Ruline, you know, I think the feedback might be coming from Mike Maggin's phone. So Mike, I was gonna suggest if you could mute your, your phone if you're not speaking at the time, and then when it's time to speak, you can unmute.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kaczynski? Yeah, Katie, you mentioned that there's neighbors to the left and right did submit some questions. Just wondering what those questions were, and were there any other comments that you know of?
The city didn't receive any other comments or inquiries regarding this project, other than those two. The neighbor to the, to the west, to the north, the optometry owner just simply wanted to see the plans, which we sent over, and they didn't follow up with any additional comments. And the other property owner did have some concerns, which staff communicated to the applicant. The applicant did reach out to that property owner again. And that neighboring property owner indicated to me earlier today that they seem to have worked things out and that those concerns had been addressed. So some of those were potentially unauthorized parking on that neighboring property because they do have a small parking lot for the Cox store, and I'm blanking on what the other business is there at the moment, but they do have a small parking lot, so they were a little bit worried about that. And just some things related to actually the construction, since it is a zero lot line and they're building right up to the property line. You know, that owner just wanted to make sure that their business operations wouldn't be negatively affected during the construction period.
And those concerns have been alleviated, I'm assuming?
According to that property owner. They did not follow up with any additional concerns and said that after speaking with the, the property owner, Brian Ross, that they were satisfied.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Wu?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Katie, just a few fact-checks. I believe, I assume that you have a chance to review the applicant's documents. On the first page, about a project data, it lists the residential area to be 2,143 square feet. Then on top, in addition to that, there is a, there are 335 square feet of stairways. So is there any provision in our zoning code that would exempt the stairways for footage?
I was already unmuted. Yes, that's why they were calculated separately. I can double-check on that and find the code section, but I know that was something that we discussed with the applicant very early on in the application process. But let me just see if I can find that very quickly for you. Did you have other questions while I do that?
Yes, about a lot of coverage. The project data shows that 1,515 square feet divided by 2,000. divided by 2,000, you would have 76%. This is different from the 70% in the report. Can you clarify that? When we, when we look at the building, only the last about 22, 23 feet are not, is not covered by the building. So 76, 77% of lot of coverage is probably what is proposed. And I wonder if it's just a omission or the different way you calculate it?
Now, that, that could be. Commissioner Will, I I know that the rear setback is about 25 feet and I think they did only end up with about like four or six inches on the front. Without looking at the plans and doing that math, I, I can't verify that for you on the spot here. But you could be correct that the actual lot coverage is greater. I don't know where I would have gotten that number unless it's on the plans. Let me see.
Well, I wish to take, take it out because now I'm at 15, 1550. Divided by 2,000, that's 76%.
Okay, I, I that could be, and I apologize if that's incorrect.
Oh, that's fine. I'd like to establish that as a fact before we go into a discussion. And then the other question is, in your report about a variance, you stated that the report states there is no way for the property owner to develop a viable mixed-use project of any size. It's a very strong statement and I want to imagine the applicant proposed a a development with a smaller footprint and a smaller unit on top of the retail instead of 2143 plus a stairway, maybe something smaller. Is that, is that something that's not viable in your opinion?
So in terms of real estate development, I really can't speak to that, whether it's viable by the pro forma for what it would cost to redevelop that. I do stand by my statement in that the existing the exist, the existing development is already at the maximum lot coverage essentially.
Excuse me, sorry, sorry for interrupting Katie. If anyone is not on mute, could you please go on mute if you're not speaking? Because we're getting some ringing feedback. Thank you.
And so the existing commercial space, they would actually have to utilize about half of that for a garage if they were to not get a variance for for parking in some way, some variance for size, and then we still have the issue with trash. Which is a little bit more complicated with commercial than just if it's the residents, they can work that out on their own. And then if you only have 400 square feet of commercial on the first floor and you still need stairways and you need your garage and you need articulation and kind of offsets. I'm not sure what kind of what kind of second floor residence you could end up with that, that actually makes sense. So the applicant may be able to speak to that a little more and certainly the residence could be smaller. But I don't think that reducing the size of the residence would eliminate the need for the variances requested.
Okay, well, I understand that, but the extent of a variance, that's debatable, right? So and also in the report, it states that the property owner would never be able to develop to the maximum FAR 1.5 without a variance to the maximum lot coverage, 50%. As a meeting, those requirements would produce a three-story building with 1,000 square feet on each floor. And I like this analysis. But, but don't you think that this would apply to any parcel in the same zone regardless of the parcel, the size of the parcel? Take, take any parcel. If, if, if an applicant is limited to 50% lot coverage and then to three story, and in order to achieve that maximum AFR 1.5, they would have to produce a box. So, so you would, using your same logic, you would have to support a variance for any parcel in the zone, would you?
Using only that, yes. I mean, math-wise, you're absolutely correct. But when you compound that with the other issues for this lot with the 20-foot width and not being able to really fit two spaces abreast and just the limitation that I just previously discussed on the size of the residential unit and the office unit. You'd really be limiting the developer to something that, again, I'm not a real estate developer and I'm not good at pro formas, but I don't think when you add all those factors together, I do think that they compound and it's really not possible. But you are correct in that just that alone as a justification for the variance would not be sufficient.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I do have a question for our city attorney, Mel. For, in order for the city to issue a variance, we talk about a possible deprivation of some privilege enjoyed by by applicants in similar situations. The zoning code reads that deprivation of those privileges must result in a hardship for the property owner. What type of, what type of hardship, you know? Do, do, do we have to see a demonstration of a hardship? Is it just a physical hardship or is it, is a financial hardship a part of the consideration?
Yes, so this is a state law standard. The findings in our zoning ordinance are derived from the government code. These are findings that are consistent across every city in California. What you look primarily at is whether size, shape, topography, location, et cetera, would deprive the property of the privilege to develop, similar to surrounding properties. Hardship is not defined in the government code, really in the case law. The, the question is, is, is the lot's size, is the lot's topography such that it's going to be difficult to develop the same as other property in the vicinity? If you can answer that, that, that question in the affirmative, then a variance can be granted. Now, I can't make the findings for the commission. That's, that's, that's really up to you. I will say that a lot like this is, is, is a quintessential variance lot, right? Typically, you're going to see variances granted for lots that are irregular in shape, say, a triangle or, or, you know, other odd angles, lots that have things like storm channels cutting through them or lots that are exceptionally small, making it difficult to develop, period. So this is the kind of lot that would be found in, you know, a variance textbook. Again, whether the findings can be made is up to the commission.
Okay, and the neighboring property, they are but your neighboring property is probably covered 100% or close to that. That's a non-conforming existing structure. Is that, can that be used for comparison?
So any, yeah, it's a good question. Any neighboring properties in the vicinity can, can be used for comparisons, right? So if there are 10 properties surrounding this property and every property has been able to develop, whether they're non-conforming or not, right? If they have structures on them that, you know, for example, take up the entire lot, that is, that is going to be a surrounding property that's used for comparative purposes when looking at the variance findings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thank you. Well, I remember this one coming through Design Review a long time ago, almost had forgotten about it. And then here it is. So it's nice to see it here finally. And the, happy to see the, the second story balcony opened up the way it is, but we can talk more about that in discussion. So, but Katie, questioning for you is going to be limited to landscape and the east and west elevations. And the drawings depict what looked like window openings that are enclosed by shutters. Are those going to be open? Is there light going to be allowed through any of those openings on either side?
At the shuttered locations, no, those are false windows. You, you can't have windows at those locations. If you're referring to at the second floor deck, those are open areas.
Okay, so that would be it. So none of those faux windows that are shown to be closed shutters are actually going to open. There's nothing there. Okay.
They cannot per building code.
Yeah, okay. And then second question is landscape related and it looks like we, the applicant is not complied with requirements for percentage of UOA provided in landscaping, right? So there's some deficiency there. It's not much, but there is. And the, it looks like the the, it's been made up, they, they met the requirement to the level they have by providing landscape in the upper balconies. As the code reads, it, it includes upper level balconies, decks and roofs with permanently affixed boxes. And in our elevate, our, our site plan, there is landscaping shown up in the balcony areas. Though it's not called out, we don't have anything that even looks like an official landscape plan, but there's some callouts at the ground level at the rear 15-gallon, whatever it's going to be, looks like maybe a palm tree and some other shrubs. Which isn't a super huge concern in terms of plant type, though the purpose of that is to provide some visual you know, improvements even at the rear area along the alleyway. So how are, so my question is, how are we going to ensure that those planter areas are permanent on the balconies and are affixed and are actually going to function as planters with living plants in them?
And great question. And so first of all, I did want to clear up that while it is 11 square feet deficient in the amount of landscape as a percentage of the urban open area, it does still comply with the code because we do have that code section, which I cited in my report. It's section 17.68020, which states that existing developments that request improvements don't have to fully comply. Improvements are good. And since this site had 0% landscape and now is meeting it is just efficient by 11%. Staff really felt that that, that met that code section requirement. To answer your question, we, as a condition of approval that you'll find prior to building issuance, building permit issuance, that standard condition that we always have that requires them to submit the complete landscape, landscape and irrigation plan to the city is required. And so staff gets to look at that. And I think actually that condition does require that Pat Murphy also look at that. So in that, staff would be able to ensure that those things are permanent and, you know, as permanent as we can make them be. And then also the landscape architect would be able to review it for, you know, appropriateness for Spanish colonial revival as well as within the coastal zone.
Okay, well, thanks. That, that's good. I appreciate that. Let me ask Katie and maybe Gabriel can chime in on this as well. Why are we not seeing landscape plans coming through here? What, I mean, this is not the only project. But since this clearly does not have landscape plans, why are we continuing to wait until after the fact?
I can answer that for this project, Commissioner Blackwell. And in this case, because it is a very small landscape area and each review, each review by Pat Murphy does represent a cost to the applicant. For processes, for cases that I process, I do try to limit those reviews to the extent that that it's really beneficial. So in this case, staff did review for the basic code requirements that would, you know, affect the site plan and things like that. Knowing that we would be able to sort those things out at plan check and not have the applicant have to pay for that additional review from the landscape architect. I can't speak to other projects that you're saying are coming through without landscape plans because I don't think I, I have brought any through recently without landscape plans. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't know that it's like a policy or a city planning-wide trend to my knowledge. Maybe Gabriel can speak to that.
Doesn't like his lights on, but I appreciate that. No, it, it's true that every project that we see as far back as I can remember, has not included a final landscape plan. And this condition is, is on there and I, and I get that and, you know, the city's done a pretty good job for the most part, looking at these after the fact, but you know, we've, we've had this discussion, Katie. And I beg your pardon on this, but even before your time, there's been, you know, pointed discussion and concurrence on the importance of a final landscape plan. Because that 15-gallon, whatever it is in the back, though, you know, you may think it's insignificant, you know, what if the applicant comes in and proposes a, you know, Euclid to Citriadora or some, you know, something that's going to grow 100 feet tall and maybe a problem, maybe it's weak wooded or whatever it is. I'm just being, you know, throwing out an example there, but you know, it's, these are things that, you know, really can affect the aesthetic of a, of a project. And, you know, we've, we've got, we, you know, we've got a concern for the applicant in terms of cost and burden, et cetera. But it's still our job to, you know, review these projects in their entirety and know exactly what we're getting. So we can consider every element, no matter how small. That's just, you know, that's a courtesy to the applicant regardless of the cost. It's something that we're here to do as, as a service to not just the applicant, but to the community. So I, I just, I'm asking again, I mean, it's not killing us not to have the plans here, but again, it's, it's a deep concern I have and have had all the way through. It just, we just don't see a complete project and we don't have the landscape plans.
So, so maybe I can speak to this a little bit more, Commissioner Blackwell. And if you do want to see final landscape plans at the planning commission level, this would be news to me and it, you know, I don't know when that was communicated, but the code does specify that just preliminary landscape plans are provided at the discretionary review level. And then prior to permit issuance, the final landscape plans are provided. I really understand your point about them not even specifying like a, a tree species, but in that case, again, because of the scale of the landscape on this project, which is very small. I, as staff, didn't see the benefit of that. And I think as the commissioners, you do value Pat Murphy's reviews. Or so it seems in my time here. And, and that if they were proposing a really inappropriate tree species, that if staff didn't notice that, definitely Pat Murphy would.
Yeah, I understand. We, we just, not to belabor this, Katie, with all due respect, and yes, you were not here. Nor was Gabriel during those discussions where we had, again, we had consensus with majority of this commission present that we really wanted to see comprehensive landscape plans so we can consider the whole package. And, you know, but just to remind you that, you know, you had stated that preliminary plans be presented. These aren't even preliminary plans, even though small, granted, there's nothing here. There's just some callouts, but, I mean, there's some shapes, but no callouts whatsoever. I think these are, it's a, it's a pretty far, you know, far cry from prelim landscape plans. But to your point, and with all due respect, you know, you, you do have a design here that will probably be okay. Just using this as a small example of, of something that I've noticed along the way as potentially problematic and worthy of further discussion and correction. But thank you. Thank you, Katie. Good job. That's all I have. Jim, thanks.
Katie, I, I noticed that a little, about half a block north of this project. Katie, I, I noticed that a little, about half a block north of this property, there's three or four properties that appear to be similar, kind of extra narrow lot properties. Do you know, or I probably don't have a survey of it or anything, but do you have a general sense of how many of these kind of half lot or special lot properties we've got, particularly in this area, sort of north El Camino Real? Is there, is there a lot of them? Is there, you know, twenty percent of the lots like this or is it just these, these little handful we see? Do you, do you know?
Yeah, so within this zone, within MU two, which has, you know, the six thousand square foot lot minimum and the sixty foot lot width minimum. And there are just the ones that you've mentioned. So there's four, just a locker cell away. And so that represents two properties that had been subdivided, similar to this subject property that, that is used to be sixteen oh two and sixteen oh four before they were developed. So in total, in this zone, it's just those six twenty foot wide lots. There are additional lots that are, many additional lots that are less than the minimum. So less than sixty, sixty feet wide, for example. But those six are the only that, the ones that are just twenty feet wide.
Okay, very good. The only reason I ask is because I, I, I got a question in my mind of if there's a lot of properties like this in this basic zoning area, maybe we should be playing with the zoning requirements as opposed to doing potentially very variance for, for each of these properties. But if, that's the only number of properties and it doesn't, doesn't particularly pertain to this particular one. And I just wanted to make sure too, you, you did mention this, but in the plans, the color is kind of a light yellow of the building and I, I assume it's going to be that same kind of classic white stucco that we have in the other SCR type buildings we have, correct? The final product?
Well, and so it, it is an off white, not a, not a true white that they've called out there, the Aspen La Habra stucco. And I, I wouldn't say it's yellow, although it could look that way on the plans. And when you pull up that color on the La Habra website, it's really, it's more of a tan. Well, however, does have a couple of whites that are more white. And specifically the crystal white that's been used on a lot of our developments. And so if the planning commission does want them to use more of a true white, that's certainly something that either you can incorporate as a condition or just let staff know and, and we can, we can ensure that happens at plan check.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Chris, your mute is off. Did you have another question?
Are, are you talking about me?
Oh yeah, your mute's off, so I didn't know if you had a question or not.
I actually do have a question for Katie. I was, I was looking through the report and I couldn't find the details of the lighting for the commercial purpose of this building. Is there, is there lighting, proposed lighting?
There is. And they, again, they didn't provide a lighting plan. There's just like the because there's no required lighting for the site exterior. We didn't require them to provide a lighting plan. The lighting in the front would be provided by the, the streetlights. They do have a couple of sponsors and staff would be reviewing those for substantial conformance with the way they appear on these plans as well as for code requirements for, you know, light and glare and that type of thing. It is tricky on, on a site with a zero lot line at, at the, at the front property line essentially. But so there aren't any details in, in these plans.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. And Gabriel or Katie, do we have anything to read into the record for the public hearing?
I mean, I've, I've received no comments.
I haven't received any comments.
Very good. Then I will close the public hearing and open this up for planning commission discussion. Commissioner Kozinski.
Uh, I'll, I'll wait toward the end.
Okay, Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, I, I just want to stress a couple of things here. And one is, this is the first project in, in our mixed use twenty foot wide project. And Mal may be more familiar with twenty foot wide projects unknowingly because Huntington Beach has a couple of neighborhoods on California and I think it's Delaware that are twenty foot wide and a huge success and a beautiful streetscape. But being the first one in and not being surrounded by multiple other twenty foot wide lots. We have the ability when adjacent properties are built to require which side possibly the landscaping goes on so the rhythm of the street doesn't change drastically. And I just want to, I know Michael is very attuned to landscaping. But the planning commission is a dynamic commission and we don't always have someone who is conversant in landscape. As a, in June, we may not have anybody who knows the proper name of a tree. So we do have to trust staff and the city's architect. But one, I want to make sure nobody's worried about a twenty foot lot. Our ordinances are based on a sixty foot lot. And as such, they don't address all issues that a twenty foot lot might have. And I think the variance is, in this case, is appropriate due to the lot. We don't know what's going to be built adjacent to this piece of property. The applicants gone a little bit to the sides to make acceptable, but when an adjacent building is built, it's going to be abutting it and could block off the open ends of these patios or balconies. So I want to make sure that people realize that we had asked the applicant to provide a document that showed what is the building envelope that an adjacent building could cover his building with. And I did that so people would understand that what you see now, this is the first guy in, isn't what the ultimate look of the street once it is fully developed or the block is fully developed is going to look like. I am comfortable with this particular project. It's going to stand out drastically until the adjacent sites are built. But that is the nature of first, first man in. And I can support the variance. I think we did a good job reviewing the design and design review, even though not every item was agreed to by the applicant. Ours are recommendations, not demands. And so I can support this project and will give a positive approval when we have the note. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu? Thank you, Chair. I, I will not be able to support this project tonight for a number of reasons. The first reason is there's a long list of design revision comments made by the design review subcommittee and applicants did a, a very few of them and left them, most of them untouched. So as a result, the design, my viewpoint is not, it's not good enough to, to be, for my support. The, the rear, the entry of the residence of, of the alley is is at the end of dark, dark corral or tunnel. And it was asked to, to bring that entry out to the closer to the alley so it's visible by the public. It is a safety concern. It's not a change. The front portion, the front facade and elevation of the building does not bring enough pedestrian oriented design to benefit the, the character of the street. Has no landscaping or no setback, no covered outdoor space. There's a very small niche. But, but that's not substantial or not enough. The retail design has a ceiling height about nine feet. Any customer would have to walk into the recess and make a right and open the door. And then there's a little ramp going up to, to the grade. Now, the ceiling is not tall enough to, for the success of the retail store. If I read the viewing, drawing correctly, the ceiling is about a nine foot ceiling. Not, not for any retail to be really successful. It's designed, it's almost designed as a leftover space. And I highly doubt that this retail space will bring any life to the, to the street. And then finally, the, the finding for the variance, for me, there's a lack of demonstration of hardship. Given that this lot size is twenty feet wide and I would support some variance, for example, the variance on the parking. But for the lot coverage, seventy, seventy-six percent, the lot coverage is limited to fifty percent. And the applicant can make it bigger possibly. But I, I, I don't see effort for the applicant to reduce the lot coverage as much as feasible because no one here is resident, real estate developer. We're not looking at the performer and we don't see any material to show that there's a financial hardship for not being able to develop a two, two thousand plus residence over this retail. It's given that it's a very small lot and I would imagine putting a, a residence over it with maybe eighteen hundred square feet or whatever the number is and with a smaller lot coverage would be, would still be viable. Anyway, the statement that it's not viable, I don't see the evidence to support it. Therefore, I cannot make that finding for the variance. Variance in essence has to be a hardship and I, the physical dimension and the shape probably warrants the variance for the, for the parking garage deviation, but not, not to the extent that applicant has to fall in terms of a lot of coverage. So for those reasons, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, Jim, thank you. Well, I, I do, I do like the, the progress that the applicants made since design review subcommittee. One of the big concerns was the openness from the street. You know, design review subcommittee is advisory, not making any decisions, making recommendations. So there's no real commitment at this level to anything that ends up here. I can say I am still very concerned with the architectural piece. And to Commissioner Crandall's point, yes, true, some of us may or may not be around in June. Who knows, incoming, there might even be an actual landscape architect. You know, when I look at this stuff, I, you know, I've been in development for twenty plus years and worked on hundreds of projects with all kinds of different fun stuff, landscape and otherwise. Worked with six or seven different types of architects along the way, but whether it be an urban design architect, green designer, industrial, commercial, you name it. But I think if you took a, any of the six or seven types of architects and sat them in a room across from a landscape architect, I think it'd be a really interesting debate on what is more important, the building or the landscape. I kind of side with everybody. I think it's all very important and important for the harmony of, of the project and its balance and integration into the built in natural environment. I think it's super important. It's unfortunate during my time on the commission, there has been more energy and investment in this. Whether the plans come in at the end and looked at by Pat Murphy or fill in the blank, doesn't matter. We don't see it here. And that is really unfortunate. And I, and I, and I'm just going to keep banging that bell until I'm not here to bang it anymore. It's just super important, no matter how big or small the landscape elements are. We have a provision in our code that requires landscape to some degree. It's there for a reason. Look at every other development and I looked at some of, when this went through DRC before, I happened to have access to some entitlements for adjacent, adjacent properties. And there were conditions of approval that required landscape. You know, why are we less concerned now, especially now with this, this corridor in North Beach and it's uprising? I just don't get it. And I see nothing at the front edge of this property. And to Commissioner Wu's point, yeah, I don't see a hardship at all. I mean, I don't see any hardship to make the land, the living area smaller. What's, where's the hardship? They can't have two thousand square feet or three thousand? Where do you draw the line? So I don't believe that finding's made at all. And for that reason, I wouldn't support the project alone. Not to mention the lapse in attention and concern for landscape and no controls put in place really that we can see here right now. There's no commitment on paper or in the report other than what we hope will happen at the end of the review process prior to permit. Which I have to, with all due respect, you know, give staff credit. We have an excellent planning department, building department. And yeah, these projects do come out the other end pretty, pretty, pretty well. And so, you know, again, with all that respect, it's, it's necessary for these folks that work so hard on these projects. But what's, what's the point of, what's our point? I mean, our, we're looking at land use here. Design elements are important too. I know it's land use and some of us aren't, you know, really keen on getting into the nitty gritty on design. But these are important elements. Over time, look at Pep Boys next door. Look how significant that creeping fig is on the side of the building. You don't even notice it, but it's there and it, it gives you a good feeling. It's green. And they were space compromised, so they were asked to put that in. And it, it makes a huge difference in, in the feeling when you're sitting on that bench, as shown on the first page of the plans. I walked this project, I walked front and back and it feels good around Pep Boys, having that vine on the wall. Landscape makes a difference. So if some of you are still around, if all of us are hopefully after June, I hope this is an ongoing conversation because I really do full heartedly believe it's important for our city to make all elements important, you know, landscape or otherwise. All, and it's, and it's the respect that the applicant deserves too. And just as importantly, our community. But to Commissioner Wu's point stated well, I'm not going to reiterate, but you know, that coverage isn't there. I don't see the hardship and I will not support the project for that reason. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kozinski.
I, I, I was, I've been struggling with this one, but I, I will support this project. And I don't know if the applicant necessarily needs to show a hardship. Mal said that this is a textbook, a variance lot example, and I agree. I could, I'm looking at the findings and I believe I could make everyone. And I do believe that this building will enhance the into the neighborhood. It definitely beats what's there right now. So I'm in full support of the project.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you for your comments, for all the other commissioners. Like Bart said, this is the first guy in and it's a tough lot. The owner is struggling with the land use decision thirty or forty years ago along with several lots up the street. And so I think like, I kind of side with Mal, this is a textbook case on, on, on variance proving hardship. I think the other commissioners have their own positions on it. I think we, this will enhance this section of the neighborhood, this whole section along here needs help. Just long whenever the, the favorite little proven restaurant finally gets going on its approval down the street a little bit. I agreed with, on Commissioner Blackwell, I think several years ago on and he made this key words here, we, we need and he made these key words here, we need conceptual plan of landscape plans, and I agreed with that, not final. There's a difference between a conceptual plan and a final landscape plan. The conceptual plan, I think, is a lot we can make a decision on, and in turn, then Pat Murphy can make the final adjudication on. So I agree with concept plans, but final plans are finding from a second, it's a bridge too far for many of these projects, particularly this one. So I'm comfortable with what the staff has put together, while the applicant will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I walk this alley a couple of few times a week, it's not too far from my home. And I'm glad to see that some of the work that the applicant and DRC had done to make sure that the back of the building is appropriate to the alley. It's, you know, like a big step up, as Commissioner Blackwell was saying, you know, we did that with Pep Boys and kind of held them to it. I think even though the Paseo Plan is more in the T-zone at the moment, it's going to be down here at some point. And so, you know, making it better and being sensitive to that, I think is a very good thing for us to do. I'd like to see perhaps a little more, you know, a little more elements or something on the back of the building. But it's certainly, in its current state, a significant improvement over what we have there now. And, you know, one thing I was thinking, it's a thin lot, so you've got kind of a skinny building there. Kind of my hope is, is that even though it's an odd-shaped lot, it'll make for more interesting street frontage at some point as other buildings build up there and they build sort of full-size. And then we also have some narrow buildings just to sort of break up how that goes. So that could be a little more interesting than just see kind of a bunch of same-sized boxes. And that, but it does make it difficult, this is something that was done a long time ago. In terms of the success of the retail store, it's kind of not my call. I, you know, we sometimes, you know, I sometimes wonder, how was the applicant going to make money at this? But I'm not a retail expert, and that's a risk they want to take, it's their risk to take. So, you know, that's, you know, hopefully it'll work for them, and there'll be some small retail there that will work well. I think Commissioner Blackwell, he brings up the point of, he feels he doesn't have enough information to make judgments on landscaping. At this point in the game, I think it's probably worthy of a discussion of the planning commission. Maybe we could put under a new business sometime and, you know, you know, identify sort of a process for it, make sure that we've got sufficient conceptual plans when we see this sort of thing, understanding that final plans usually do come, whether, you know, even in building, do come after planning commission. So, and what would we want to see there? I think that that is, you know, perhaps not unreasonable. But I think that we should now do it as a separate discussion and not focus on sort of that process issue for the individual applicants that we have. That would be, that would be my preference with that, so we could actually, you know, have an opportunity to handle the issue. Let's see, was there anything else? The bottom line is I can make the finding for the variance. I do think that it is difficult, you know, to build here, you know, to build something that's going to have sufficient retail value, or I should say, you know, value to sell if they want to sell it to someone else, a place that's big enough to be commercially viable. I think the tandem, you know, who likes to see tandem, but at least there's some of that brickwork in the driveway, which again is a nice, a better view from the valley, from the alley. So there's just kind of no other way, you know, to build that out to a sufficient size probably without having that tandem, those cars in tandem. So what are you going to do with that? So I can make that finding, and I am in support of the project. I think it's going to make the area nicer, it's going to put another stake in the ground in that area and hopefully challenge the other owners there to continue to sort of up the ante and build other areas that, you know, are discontinued, to make the area and the individual buildings nicer and nicer. So that's what I have to say about it. Does anyone else have any further comments or a motion? If not, I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number PC 21-004, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving cultural heritage permit nineteen dash one three zero, variance nineteen dash one three one, site plan permit nineteen dash two one seven, North Hill Commune Real mixed use, a request to consider renovation in addition of two stories to an existing one-story commercial building resulting in a first-floor commercial unit with a two-story residence above, including a variance to exceed maximum lot coverage and to allow tandem residential parking in sixteen oh two North Hill Commune Real in the MU2 Zone District and the Architectural Visitor Serving Commercial and Coastal Zone overlays. Katie, one question per the issue that Commissioner Wu brought up. Do we have to talk about specific percentages for the variance, or is what we have currently enough?
So I did measure on the site plan, and it looks like it might be about seventy-two. And if we want to drill down on that, maybe Commissioner Wu can state where he came up with the seventy-six. Because I'm not seeing it. We did have an issue with a couple of inconsistent numbers at one point in terms of how getting all of the plans to match. So maybe I'm scaling the wrong plan. But I didn't get significantly more than seventy percent.
Katie, this number derives from two sources, they corroborate with each other.
Okay.
The first source is the sheet A1. And on the drawing, it states that the total lot coverage fifteen fifteen divided by two thousand. That's seventy-six. That's seventy-five point seven five percent. To support that number, while the drawing looks, except for that, the drawing looks consistent. If you go to, we understand this lot is, the width is twenty feet, right? The full width of the lot. So we go to sheet A2, it shows that at the rear, there's a twenty-two feet four-inch setback at rear. That's to a garage door. And the second floor is actually projecting out of it. So you can call it a twenty-two or twenty-one feet setback on the backside. Then, as you stated, a couple of inches on the front, quarter twenty-two total. Out of a hundred, that's not covered by the building. That gives me seventy-eight percent. Whether it's seventy-six or seventy-eight, that's technical details.
I'm sorry, I'm just not, on sheet A2, they have the dimension twenty-six feet nine inches from the second floor to, maybe here.
If I can chime in just real quick while you're looking for numbers, I think the question is what is needed for the motion?
Yes.
And I think for the motion, although we have to say that the variance is granted for the lot coverage as depicted on, for example, the site plan and in the application. There's no need for a specific percentage, as long as we tie that variance back to what is depicted in the application itself.
Okay, then I will make as part of my motion that the variance is as depicted in the site plan.
And I will second your motion.
A motion by Rulin, second by Crandall. I'll call the roll, Commissioner Kozinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
No.
Commissioner Blackwell.
I'll have to be in now.
Commissioner Crandall.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Rulin votes aye, measure passes four to two. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Megan and Mr. Lambros, and thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
And we will move on to item nine, new business general plan strategic implementation program update. And we get Christopher again to take us through this. So please go ahead.
Tara, can you please pull up my, our point? Thank you. So this is a request to update the general plan strategic implementation program. The annual exercise the city does with the city's budget and long-range, long-term financial plan to ensure that the general plan evolves with changing needs and circumstances of the community and to ensure the commitment to the city's long-term vision. To review priorities and set them for the coming year based upon a review of resources. Also to reevaluate the lead department. And ultimately, the planning commission's feedback is, since the city council has part of a long-term financial plan paper that will be reviewed through the coming weeks and a budget workshop. So the next slide, please. This slide shows a review of the status of the strategic implementation program. There are thirty high-priority implementation measures, which I should just mention for, if there are public viewers, implementation measures are one-time projects with a definite endpoint, or they can be ongoing programs that happen every year. We have high-priority items of thirty, of which fifty-three percent are completed. Thirty percent are started and three percent are not started. So we have, and the performance measure is that we start them. So we have mostly moved to meet that one. For the medium items, we have thirty-six total, that's all departments. And we have nine percent, twenty-five percent completed, eleven percent started, and fifty-eight percent not started. For low priority, we have thirty-four total, of which twenty-six percent are completed, six percent are started, and seventy percent are not started. And then we have a hundred and fifty-eight ongoing IMs. Next slide, please. In addition to the extensive list of projects and programs in the strategic implementation program, we have other items that are directed by the city council that are not directly listed. And these include items that we have ongoing. We, on the slide shows our work program that we have planned for the next several months. It includes items like, an item coming to the planning commission very soon to remove references to toll roads and specific plans. We have the housing element update, we have items related to the local coastal program. We have batch updates in the zoning code, we have a leave flow ordinance that's on hold right now. And we have other items. So we can review this, but the main, the main point is we want to give you a complete picture of the work that city council directs us to complete. And we are limited by the resources that we have, and we follow the priorities that are given to us. Thank you, I'm here to answer questions. I will note that my packet goes in and talks more about the changes that are proposed and shows them in redline. And I'd rather not go through each of them, but rather answer questions if you have them.
Okay, very good. So opening up for questions, Commissioner Brown.
Well, I sent an email and I informed you and to staff with the shelving or the cauldroning of the local implementation plan due to issues in the coastal commission, that I suggested we start moving out on some of the specific plans. And a series of ordinances, about five or six or seven of them, that have been on hold pending the completion of the lift, which is now on hold. And so I pushed that over to staff, I know, to you, Chris, and to Gabriel to say, and like the dark sky ordinance has been hitting me, they're halfway done. And I think it's time to move out on some of these other plans that have been hooked, that on hold, but hooked to the lift, which is now kind of on hold. I'd like to have staff to comment on that.
I do, I will mention that, in speaking with the team here, that the plan is, we have a remaining batch amendment items that went initially to the planning commission. Some of them got pushed to the next round. And that is a priority right now for us to tackle those. And that is in the work plan that I showed on that slide. When that wraps up, I think that will be the time where we'll reevaluate the specific plans. Part of that will actually be a consideration of whether to keep the remaining specific plans or potentially absorb them into the zoning code, that's a possibility. Or updating them for general plan consistency. So it is something that's important to staff. If council wants to make it a priority, then we're definitely here to do what we can to push it forward.
Seeing the specific plans became a requirement, went to pass the general plan, we've gone six years since we approved the general plan, and we've only approved one specific plan, which is the pierbowl. So, you know, the output there, I think, has been very poor. And so I urge staff to start refocusing on that.
Mr. Brown, this is Gabriel Perez, city planner. So I do appreciate those comments. You know, if you have comments on what should be the priority, you know, we will also report that to city council when the strategic implementation program is presented to them. We were intending to go full speed on the West Pico Corridor specific plan this year. And, you know, when the pandemic hit and we had to change our schedules, there was a few things that happened too. We did lose two planners. We lost Jonathan Lightfoot to the city manager's office, and he's really only finishing off projects that he was working on, like the Miramar Theater rehabilitation project. And then we lost Aaron Guy, who was a permit tech. Both of those planners are from our current planning team, right? So a lot of that's related to customer service, the counter, phone calls, emails, but also project processing before planning commission. And so when that happens, there's the workload that needs to be absorbed. In order to address those applications, we do pull in Kyle and Chris to assist. And so that's what's made it a challenge to go full speed on that specific plan. So we definitely hear you. Part of it is the resources available. But I think you vocalizing that, we can also let the city council know when this goes to the city council. And, you know, if there's, you know, something on the list that Chris mentioned in his PowerPoint about the long-range planning work plan, that should change. And then the specific plans tick priority, then that could be very, very well the case that the city council decides to do so.
There was other, there are other ordinances that were hooked onto there too, the landscaping plan, the design guidelines. Everything was behind the freight train of the local implementation plan with coastal. And once that got approved, and everything was supposed to get worked on, well, that's been cadored now by the director of community development based on pushback and coastal on some of our coastal issues in the lift. So now it's time to move forward. You start moving on some of these, not only the specific plans, but some of the underlying ordinances. And that's the only point I'm trying to make, is trying to keep focused on these things. But once the general plan got approved, which three of us worked on extensively, by law, you've got to update your specific plan. And you're very late on that. So that's the only point I'm trying to make, is it's time to pick one and work on it for a year and get it done. My point.
Right, thank you. Commissioner, we definitely hear you on that.
So before we move on, because I think we'll probably, I suspect it'll be about asking questions and having some discussion. Is there any public? Um, is there any public, uh, comment that's been requested to read into the record on the side?
We haven't received any public comment on this item.
Then I will open and close, uh, the public hearing and, um, you know, continue, uh, continue our discussion. Uh, per Commissioners Brown, Brown's comments, I, I, uh, fundamentally, I agree with it. I think what we'll, I'm sure we'll have to prioritize the specific plans. The, the West Pico corridor specific plan, I think, should be a priority as well. It, it was something that was about to be done. We see North Beach for a while now. It's been, you know, totally growing and, you know, uh, uh, kind of organically, um, uh, going through a slow resurgence, but I think we need to make sure that we address, that we've, we've got us, we've got some scaffolding for that. And it's gonna, it's, A, it'll probably go slow if we don't have a scaffolding and B, we won't be necessarily making consistent decisions. Even the app, the application we just made might even have been something that could have been part, might have been part of that plan. I don't know if it would quite be in that corridor, but it, it might have been. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of getting, getting that one done and making that a priority for our specific plans. And, and I am glad to see the priority given to the, um, uh, the lighting ordinance, given the fact that, you know, we'd worked on in the past. And I mean, that's often a file in the mothball bin right now, all the work that we did so far. But, um, uh, it would be good to pick that up again because there's, there's, there's an old saying. There's nothing, nothing wastes more time than something left, you know, partially done. Cause we've got an investment in it now. So it'd be good to kind of complete that investment. Um, Commissioner Wu?
Uh, yes, Gabriel, um, on the chart, it says, uh, um, coastal, local coastal program. Commissioner Brown already touched on that. Uh, I just wanna find out from you, what, what's the status of, of that? The last time I knew about it is, uh, that is awaiting city council's direction to proceed with the implementation plan. Are we still waiting for a city council's direction? Are we, are we working on it now?
Yes, Commissioner Wu, we are still waiting for that. I'm not sure when that, um, direction is, is going to be provided. Um, I, I just don't have that answer for you. But, uh, yeah, that was put on hold, seeking direction from the city council. Uh, we were working on the implementation plan that, uh, is required for the local coastal program. And, uh, there was significant amount of work done on that. Um, but, uh, but that was, um, put on hold in the fall.
Okay. And, and it's a high priority. When do they expect, uh, to have a direction from the city council on that?
Uh, you know, I, I, I thought it was gonna happen sometime, uh, you know, winter, uh, spring of this year. So I, I just, I just don't know for sure. And I would have to check with, um, our community development director on that.
Okay, okay, thanks. And another question is, do you know if there's a plan to close the gap for our bicycle master plan on Pico? Currently, there's a gap between, um, Albertson to Los Molinos. And there was some proponent to use the, to use the, um, the drainage channel somehow to get the bicycle to the, to the other side of the freeway. Is there any, any progress on that? And it's probably a public works.
Yeah, Commissioner, I haven't heard, um, I know there is, there are some projects that Public Works is working on, on that stretch. I don't know if it addresses the bike lane specifically. Uh, I know there was a challenge in terms of making that project work that you're talking about. Uh, because it would be costly to do that, but, uh, I, I can report back to you if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
The T M L where it emerges is behind staples, is about seven hundred feet long. So you'd have to have all sorts of evacuation devices in there for, um, carbon monoxide, stuff like that from the freeway. So going to use on the channel, it's pretty tough.
So, uh, Gabriel, um, I don't know if you've ever, um, met Brenda, oh boy. I took, I can't blank on her last name.
Miller.
Brenda Miller.
Brenda, Brenda Miller. She, uh, was a, a huge part of our, um, bicycle and pedestrian master plan, which ended up getting adopted into the general plan. Uh, she won a, a state level award for her volunteer work in, working on that and preparing for it. She's a very big bike, bike advocate. Um, in fact, she was for a short time on the planning commission too, about ten years ago. Uh, so she is an excellent person to be in contact with. Um, in this city, when talking about stuff like that, I, I would strongly encourage you to, you know, probably as one of the first, the first things you do when you're thinking about a bike path or something like, or, or having something to do with bicycle is to, um, see if she's interested in being, being in the, being in the loop on something like that. Um, cause she can have a, a great deal to contribute.
Yeah, thank you for that information. I'll reach out.
Yeah, and if you need Brenda's, uh, I, I might have her contact information, but there's people that do so. Um, yeah, definitely with someone worth contacting. Um, I don't see anyone, uh, lighting up for any other, uh, con, uh, other, other questions or comments. If people are, uh, content with the S I P, someone could make a motion. If I don't hear anything, I'll make the motion again. Okay, going once, going twice. I'll move to adopt resolution PC twenty one dash zero zero three, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, recommending the city council approve the general plan, strategic implementation program for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Motion by Rulin, I, I heard Crandall first, uh, second by Crandall. I will call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Negative.
And, uh, Rulin votes yes, passes five to one. All right, next item ten is old business. We have none. Um, item eleven, reports of commissioners and staff. Um, start with, uh, staff, Gabriel. Uh, anything for staff to report?
The, the only thing I have to report, I did send the email out to the plant commissioners that we will have a educational training on architectural design. Uh, you know, we've been having internal discussions with staff and there's a feeling that, uh, it's probably, uh, time for, um, some more design training. And, uh, the Zoom platform allows for an opportunity to be able to do that. So we are gonna have Henry Lenny, he's not gonna have to travel to San Clemente, but can join us from his office in Santa Barbara. Um, and, uh, be able to, um, provide an interactive, uh, training session, uh, utilizing some projects that, uh, have gone through the process in the past. And maybe he'll point out a few things regarding what to look for, especially with regards to Spanish colonial revival architecture. So, um, so just want to let you know about that. Um, if you're interested, please reach out to me. I have had two plant commissioners reach out to me and then one said, as long, um, they'll participate if no one else does. Um, it takes that opportunity. So, uh, if you could let me know, uh, let myself or Chris know by, I would say, uh, by, by Friday, so that we can, uh, provide the participation information to you. And that's gonna be next week, February eleventh and think, I forgot the time. I mean, the time is
two to four.
Two to four, yes.
So if you don't know, count Crandall in.
Okay.
I just reached out.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wu?
Oh, I just want to ask, uh, um, Gabriel a question. Uh, Gabriel, a while ago, I, I, I inquired with you about the possibility of acquire shared parking. Um, and a possible reparking generation book. So that, um, now we can all get educated, a study that, um, shared parking is the important tool for us to try to reduce the parking demand and make, make a project work. And I, I wanna, in, in the future, um, perhaps the city can have internal shared parking study down to, to reduce the cost for applicants. But, um, my question to you is, uh, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, you know what? We're, we're gonna make that purchase this year. I think one of them, it was that I T E handbook and then the other was U L I shared parking, um, uh, guide. And so, um, so we looked at the cost of that. Our engineering division doesn't, doesn't have that in their library, so we would need to purchase it. So that's our plan to do that. And then, once we purchase it, we can also make it available for, uh, plant commissioners. Uh, I know the questions come up since a lot of times, uh, those documents are referenced in parking studies.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Blackwell?
I have no comments.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I, I, I don't have any announcements. Um, doesn't look like anyone else does. Um, so we can entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that. I vote we adjourn to the next adjourned regular meeting, planning commission meeting to be held on February seventeenth, twenty twenty one at six P M via teleconference.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall. Uh, call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell? Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner and, uh, Rulin votes aye, um, passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in a couple.